Good morning, I would like to welcome you to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM Tuesday, May 4th, 2010. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
So, Lou, Madam Chair.
We have a motion by Mr. Stamey, is there a second? Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries four zero. We have several proclamations that we'll be making this morning, and the first one is a proclamation for Peace Officers Memorial Day. And this is in observance of Peace Officers Memorial Day. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week of May 15th as National Police Week, and whereas the men and women of the law enforcement agencies in Henry County play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of our citizens, and whereas it is important that all county residents know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of the law enforcement officers who recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression. And whereas Police Week 2010 provides an opportunity to commemorate law enforcement officers past and present, who by their faithful and loyal dedication to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in so doing have established for themselves a respected and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Henry County do hereby proclaim May 10th through 16th, 2010, as Police Week in Henry County, with May 14th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice or become disabled in service to their community, and also to recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes this fourth day of May 2010. And at this time, we have Mike Tommy, State President, the Georgia Society, Sons of the American Revolution, and Hal Dehoff, past State President here. And also, do we have anyone from our county police department to come forward to accept this proclamation? Okay, if you would just come forward. The next proclamation is in appreciation of Glen Haven Baptist Church for its generous support in Henry County. Whereas Glen Haven Baptist has been a staunch supporter of both the Henry County Fire Department and the Henry County Police Department, as well as other Henry County public servants, and whereas Glen Haven Baptist Church has a history of generously donating to the needs of these Henry County entities, and whereas Glen Haven Baptist Church has donated $39,687 to the Henry County Police Department for the purchase of body armor, and $31,631 to the Henry County Fire Department for the purchase of amplifiers, and whereas between 2006 and 2010 Glen Haven Baptist Church has hosted 162 public servant breakfasts, numerous public servant banquets, and several Henry County Police Department award picnics, as well as sponsored a number of public service servant days, and most recently, a public servants dinner. And whereas the church has provided for the needs of individual officers by providing over 200 hours of counseling services through Henry County Police Department Chaplain Ralph Easterwood, as well as provided financial assistance to several Henry County PD officers in need, and whereas the church donated the services and facilities for several funerals and weddings for public servants throughout the year, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners wishes to express its sincerest appreciation and gratitude to Glen Haven Baptist Church, its staff and congregation, for their extraordinary dedication and support to the Henry County Police Department and Fire Department, and the citizens of Henry County this fourth day of May 2010. And I know we have representatives here from Glen Haven, and I'd like to invite you forward at this time, and Pastor Ralph, if there's something you'd like to say, we'd certainly love to hear from you. Want to give you a few moments to say something, then we'll gather here for a photograph.
There's enough people here today, we can take an offering, alright. But the Baptist preacher's always left to do, don't we? Also Pastor Stan LaRong is a chaplain with the Police Department, and has counsel too, and helped us so much in this. But in 2005, we were asked by Chief Russ Abernathy to be chaplains with the Police Department, and little did we know what a blessing this was going to be to us. And we found out through the years that not only do we answer 911 calls to where we are a chaplain for the calls, but also we need to be chaplains to the police themselves. They need personal people to be able to talk to, and so we've rode with them numerous times, and spent hours with them, and the counseling is increasing all the time, but the stand helps us in this, and we've developed a close relationship with so many of the officers. I'll be retiring as pastor of the Glen Haven Baptist Church in August 22nd, but one of the great blessings of that, I'm going to have more time to spend with my police officers. And it's filling a vacuum of being on the staff for 43 years, and I won't be doing as much at the church, but I'll have a great opportunity to spend more time with our police officers. And certainly it's a blessing to us, and everything that the church has done, we've been blessed because of the opportunity to serve our county. And I have the greatest staff, I have some of the greatest people in the world there that just generously give their love, and their time, and themselves, wholeheartedly to this ministry. And thank you for this very honorable award today, and we accept it humbly, and we appreciate it.
The next proclamation is in appreciation of Willett Honda South for its generous support in Henry County. Whereas Willett Honda South has been an ardent supporter of both the Henry County Fire Department and the Henry County Police Department through its financial support, and whereas Willett Honda South has a history of making generous donations to meet the needs of these Henry County entities. Whereas over the course of the past three years, Willett Honda South has donated $35,000 to the Henry County Fire Department to fund their annual awards banquet, and whereas $20,000 of that donation was designated between the years 2007 and 2009 to individual personnel in increments of $5,000 for the chief's award, which is an award given to a firefighter who demonstrates outstanding effort and achievement by going above and beyond what is expected. And whereas in 2008, the Henry County Police Department received $10,000 from Willett Honda South for the purchase of shirts and commemorative coins for officers, and in 2009, the dealership donated $10,000 for the purchase of stingers, which are electronic control devices, more commonly known as tasers. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners wishes to express its sincerest appreciation and gratitude to Mr. Scott Willett and the Willett Honda South family for their outstanding dedication, support, and commitment to both the Henry County Fire Department and the Henry County Police Department, its members, and the citizens of Henry County this fourth day of May 2010. And at this time, are the Willetts here to receive this proclamation? Alright, they are not here, we'll make sure that they receive this, and certainly if you have an opportunity to speak with them, if you would convey your appreciation to them for their generosity to Henry County. And the final proclamation goes to the Fairview Civic Club for their generous support in Henry County. Whereas the Fairview Civic Club has been a steadfast supporter of both the Henry County Fire Department and the Henry County Police Department, as well as the Henry County Water and Sewerage Authority, and whereas over the course of several years, beginning in 2006, the Fairview Civic Club has donated thousands of dollars to the Henry County Police Department to meet a variety of needs, including $10,000 to purchase a FLIR unit for cage. The unit is an infrared detection device that picks up body heat signatures. In addition, $10,000 was donated to purchase camera units for patrol cars, $18,000 for stinger devices, and most recently, $10,000 which will be used for police motorcycle equipment, testing equipment for property and evidence, headsets for telecom and records, and gun cleaning equipment. And whereas in 2008, the Henry County Fire Department received $10,000 from the Fairview Civic Club for the purchase of a turnout gear washing machine, and in 2009, the club donated $10,000 for the purchase of dry suits for the underwater search and recovery team, and most recently, in 2010, donated $10,000 which will be used for extracting equipment. And whereas the Fairview Civic Club has donated several thousand dollars over the years to the Henry County Water and Sewerage Authority for the purchase of educating our children through the Cuba Hacha Outdoor Learning Center, most recently donating the funds to build the fifth grade project in Locust Grove, and whereas the Fairview Civic Club has a history of generously donating to the needs of these Henry County entities, and has made filling the needs of these county entities a priority, saving taxpayers money while enhancing the lives of all citizens. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners wishes to express its sincerest appreciation and gratitude to Mr. Daryl Walker, President of the Fairview Civic Club, and the club members for their extraordinary commitment to improving public safety and enhancing the education of our children through their support of Henry County's Police and Fire Departments, the Henry County Water and Sewerage Authority, and the citizens of Henry County this fourth day of May 2010. And if members of the Fairview Civic Club are here, we would certainly like for you And if y'all would, let's give all of those organizations a hand for their generosity to the county. government and assist us in our goals of serving the citizens of this great community. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, Brian Lucas made a request to address the board concerning Cronin Road, and that's going to be exhibit number one. And Mr. Lucas, if you would come forward at this time. And you have 15 minutes, good morning.
Hey, good morning. I'm Brian Lucas, I live at 425 Cronin Drive. Back in July of 2006, I built this new residence that I live in. And I guess over the course of four years, I've discovered that there are a few things that are not up to par with county records concerning this particular drive. Had several meetings respectfully with Commissioner Stamey, and he's been a great help. Had a little bit of advice from some of the other commissioners, and we're here today. And I'm asking for the board to take into consideration, with advisement from Commissioner Stamey to help us out, there's four residents that live on this particular drive. It's three quarters of a mile long, and it is county maintained, it's not owned by the county, but it is maintained by the county and has been since 1986. And I've got pictures here, and I don't know if we've got time to actually hand them over or show them, we do, I'm gonna go ahead and hand them to you. Again, the road is three quarters of a mile long. We've, for the last year and a half to two years, a bus will not come down Cronin Drive. I have three kids, and I'm self-employed, and it's kinda hard for me to just get off work, go to the school, pick the kids up, drive them home every afternoon, as I have for four years living on this road. The buses did try to attempt to come down at the end of the road. Unfortunately, with the four members, residents that live on this street, we have one resident that's not cooperating with allowing the buses, or the trash trucks, or even the mail people to come down to the end of the road and turn around. That's Mr. Cronin himself. So what we're asking today, we've got a little bit of a drawing from the Henry County DOT's office, Mr. McMichael and Wade Crawford have been very cooperative in assisting with trying to move forward. The public service cannot serve us, the fire trucks have nowhere to turn around. The police, when they come to the end of the road, they can't identify which residence is which. Mr. Stamey's well aware of this, and again, he's been respectfully helping us trying to move forward. We're just here today to try to help the board be addressed with the issues, so we can move to the next step in the process. But I've got a drawing from the Henry County DOT's office showing where a cul-de-sac needs to be put in place at the end of the road, just for the mere fact of public service.
You see the county symbol flat?
Yes ma'am.
And that way we can see that on the overhead.
There we go.
There you go, thank you.
This is the proposed cul-de-sac that the county has drawn, that is, I guess, typical size for the county. This is not a typical road. We've got email response from Wade saying that we don't have permission from the third landowner to, I guess, move forward with helping with the construction of the cul-de-sac. We do have two of the three property owners that are willing. Keep in mind that this area here, this line here, is a non-residence. It's the address of 417, this blue, which you can't see here, this section here that comes up to the road, is a non-residence, but the address is 417. That's the area that would need to be, I guess, cooperative to make this whole ordeal work. And there's no residence on it, it's just a cow pasture. But it's owned by Mr. Cronin, who's not willing to, I guess, forego the easement right of way to construct this turnaround. As you can see, the existing road, it's very narrow, it's not even 20 feet wide, that's recommended, I guess, for the county purposes, for the county to access. Again, there's only four residents that live on the road, there are five property owners. We have to pull over in the ditch whenever somebody passes by. And when it's wet like it was yesterday, that's kinda hard to do. So, again, we've been told by the Henry County DOT's office that there's nothing more that they can do, so we're here today. And we're needing some, well, again, it's been going on for four years, my daughter just broke her ankle. A bus does not, the bus drops our kids off, if they ride the bus, at the end of East Lake Road and Cronin Drive. That's a three quarter of a mile walk, rain, sleet, snow, shine, it doesn't matter. She's on crutches, so therefore that's just out of the question. We've had to pick her up every day, drop her off at the house every single day for six weeks now. She's gonna have to go through rehab, and this could go on, I think, all the way through the summer. She's still got a screw in her foot, she's gonna have to have surgery and have the screw removed. The buses will not come, we just ask that you give us some help here with the turnaround. I think, Mr. Stamey, you've advised me that we can construct this cul-de-sac without it actually being a state or county cul-de-sac in radius dimensions. We don't need it this big. I've given up a portion already, and put down two loads of Crush &amp; Run to help with the turnaround with our trash trucks, and the mail lady that drops our mail off at the end of the road. Jerry Hutchinson, who doesn't actually live at the residence, but owns 116 acres, he's given up this dotted line section over here to the right, right here. That square section there is actually a fence that's been relocated. Georgia Transmission has come through, as you guys know, running the new power line from Georgia 20 to Airline Road, so that kinda enabled us to help out with Jerry's portion of the property, 'cause they're actually using that right side of that cul-de-sac as a right of way to access the power line. On the other hand, in the research that we've done over the last couple of years, as you can see where, I know it's kinda scribbly, but right here at the end, right here where it says gate, the road has a gate. The millings go another 150 feet, it's being maintained 150 feet past a gate that's been put up that says private drive. The research that we found doesn't dictate whether or not the county paid to have those milling set, there's no record of any of that. I just can't imagine that a resident could walk out to the county trucks and say, pave it a little bit further. So I'm, I guess, under the impression that the road goes further than the gate. And according to Terry McMichael and Wade Crawford with the county DOT, they do have evidence that the road does go further than the gate. So we might have a position to where we should have had access for the buses to be able to go on the county maintained right of way, to be able to turn around on a turnaround that was already there. But we've got a resident that has put a gate up and closed the end of the road off. That's another issue. Third issue and final issue, we've researched Cronin Drive, Cronin Road, I don't know which one it is, I don't think any of us do, according to the county records. There's no evidence in 1986, when this county road was adopted by the Henry County DOT's office and the state, that there was a public hearing notice for the name of the street. I don't know how it was named, nobody can give us an answer as to how it was named, but we are in the process of petitioning to change the name of the road, and go through the county guidelines as to properly record the name of the road. So, I just wanted to let the board know that today. But we generously hope that you will respectfully help us with the three or four residents that live on Cronin Drive as we do now, to adequately put a public service turnaround in, and help us with our school, traffic, mail, trash, etc. Thank you so much.
I have a couple of questions, I'd like to ask Officer Craig, could you close the door, please? Okay. Who did you, just out of curiosity, who did you purchase your property from?
I purchased five acres of land, four years ago in July, from Mr. Joe Cronin.
Okay, I guess this question is probably to staff. Just looking at the way that these flag lots come off of these roads, are we continuing to allow homes to be built in this fashion, off of a road like that, where there is, there are a number of homes there, but there's no way that emergency equipment can get down there and turn around? Are we still continuing to allow that to be done in the county, or has our code been And I know that's not solving your problem, but it may solve a future problem for someone else.
Madam Chair, you are correct, the ordinance was changed to allow for flag lots, but you have to have a minimum road for an inch of 60 feet, and that's handled through the Development Plan Review Department. But if an applicant were to come in and have a tract of land, they could subdivide it. The only thing is, you can only subdivide it three times. If it's more than three times, then that would constitute a subdivision.
I know, just looking at the way this easement, this prescriptive easement deadens into these tracts of property, it makes sense that there should have been, there should be a cul-de-sac in place to facilitate emergency equipment, and I don't know if we need to look at our ordinance again for situations specifically like this, to address it in the future, so we don't come up with these same types of problems.
Yes ma'am, I think the only challenge is, if they don't subdivide it more than three times, then we don't really review it as a full subdivision. And I think that's how individuals are able to come in and subdivide it, and we not be able to know if the public safety or the public services are gonna be able to go in there. But that is something that we can revisit in our code.
I think we need to. Terry, do you have some thoughts on this? Have you looked at this to see what the cost would be to purchase the needed property to install a cul-de-sac?
Yes ma'am, we've spent a lot of time on this project. We've actually done some field work, we've actually sent our survey crews out there and got as best We've actually sent our survey crews out there and got as best we can property line information. We have looked at cost, and all of that, I think, was attainable, that the issue with us is finding enough property to put this cul-de-sac in. If you'll notice, in the kind of dead center of the middle of this cul-de-sac is property that is owned by Mr. Cronin. Mr. Cronin is not willing to, at this time, to either sell or donate right-of-way for this, which creates a huge problem in us going in there and do that. Right now, we have a prescriptive easement, and within that prescriptive easement, there's not enough width to do this cul-de-sac. So we are kind of at a standstill unless... And it... We actually did go to Mr. Hutchins... Or Hutchinson one time and ask him if we could put an offset cul-de-sac all the way on that side. And he was not willing at that time to have the full impact upon his property. At one time, you know, the same thing could also apply toward Mr. Lucas's property, but again, even at that, you would still have to get some from Mr. Cronin, who was not willing to do that. So the problem for us is finding willing participants to give us enough land to build it.
And also, looking at this drawing, it indicates that a gate has been put up across the prescriptive easement on an area of roadway that the county has been maintaining. Is that something that we need to go back and look at and address?
Yes, ma'am. There's two issues with that. The way I see it as well, that the millings do extend beyond into Mr. Cronin's property some 150 feet. From our records, best we can tell, some of our records indicate the length of that road. We have gone out and measured that road, and it does appear to extend beyond this gate. So that in itself would indicate that... And by there being millings placed on there, the county probably did place that. The other side of that, I would like to state as well, that really we're extending a road into a piece of property that the road really just runs into. In my opinion, there's really no need in the county maintaining that last 150 feet. It's just 150 feet into Mr. Cronin's property that serves the general public. No value. The... I think the turnaround area that was mentioned is probably not sufficient to get fire trucks and things like that turned around anyway. Mr. Cronin, I'm sure, will not give us right-of-way within that area to build a cul-de-sac where the road ends currently, which is way into his property. So I don't... Like I say, again, that last 150 feet just runs into Mr. Cronin's property and really doesn't serve the public interest a lot. If the county road ended right at the gate, he would still have access and frontage and all of that. So there's two things to consider there is, yes, if we do want to demand, if you will, that the county road continue into the property, that certainly would be our recommendation that there's evidence that, in my opinion, it concludes that the roadway goes into it. However, Mr. Cronin could petition to abandon that section, and I would have to be in agreement with that.
Do any board members have questions or comments?
In the interest of public safety, and I think this is certainly what the whole issue is about, and that's one of the things this Board of Commissioners is charged with, is the public safety. And I'd like to ask Chief Lacy, in the current condition of Cronin Drive, can you get a fire apparatus into that area and turn it around?
I would expect that it would be very difficult to get it in there. Getting it in there may be something that we could do. Getting it back out easily would be very difficult.
Okay. Also, another question I have is, does anyone have a date as to when those millings were put on in this road? In Henry County, I'm assuming, put the millings down. Is that correct?
Commissioner, best I can tell...
And I'm not exactly sure. I haven't been able to come up with a date, but I would think it was somewhere when Mr. Talbot was our... Kind of over that, the outside crews, is best I can tell. I know we had a lot of millings available, you know, in that time period, but I really couldn't find a date as to when they were put down.
But do the records show that Henry County did put the millings on that road?
We can't find that, but I feel like our crews did put the millings down.
Okay. And the cul-de-sac that's drawn on the screen, is it too scale... What I'm saying, to scale, is it... Does it meet the standards of a normal cul-de-sac?
Yes, sir, it does. We provided what we thought would be adequate in order to get fire trucks, especially the fire trucks and school buses, in there and turn around. Fire truck being the bigger vehicle to accommodate.
And a school bus.
A school bus, you know, actually, we probably could shorten it a little bit for a school bus, but for a fire truck, we feel like this is what it would take to adequately get them in and out.
Okay. Again, referring to the diagram or the picture that's on the screen, in the hash marks, that is basically a flag that Mr. Cronin has to access, the blue block of property that would be on the page to the lower... The blue part in that picture. Is that correct, Mr. Stamey? Okay. If this cul-de-sac were made in proportion to what you have on the screen, then it would not deny Mr. Cronin any access to the property that he currently has. Is that correct?
In my opinion, that would be correct.
If he is not a willing seller or a donator, then there's only one other option, and that's to condemn. And we condemn every day. Out of the interest of public safety, it's not my district, and I'm going to certainly... I'm just making comments. But I think you're just going to have to go ahead and condemn if we're going to do it, because otherwise, it's not going to be done. And if this gate is closed and it is a public road, what's the difference? And yet, an eagle's landing when they've got gated community, and they have to pay for their roads because it does not have public access. So this would be no different. From that point, from where he denies public access to that road, it becomes a private road. So that's my comments, Mr. Stamey. And that's the position that I would take.
A lot of the reasons Brian's here today is because we're out of stopping block. We can't go any further without a board action. And I think, Brian, one thing I don't think was mentioned today, but are you and Jerry both willing to donate right-of-way to this?
We are, yes. Jerry's willing to sign the right-of-way. Actually, everything that is highlighted in black, that's a square block right there, is what he's already moved back his fence. I got a dotted line right there on the right side of that cul-de-sac that would help transition. And then again, I mean, this cul-de-sac that might be the scale that's drawn here that the DOT's engineering office has done is going to just... In my... I don't know that we need something that big. I really don't. I don't know how many... I don't know how many fire trucks actually have to come to the fire, but as far as a school bus and a trash truck and things of that nature, there is access in and to the property if we can just downsize the actuals... I don't want to take too much property away from Joe or anything, but whatever's adequately going to be the correct amount to help serve everyone that's on the street. Right now, if a fire happened at any one of these residents, they would have to back all the way out of Cronin Drive to East Lake to be able to turn around. So they can pull into any one of our residents and turn around. Most of us have gates on each and every parcel. They can actually pull in, but then they're actually disturbing the person's, you know, yard to be able to turn around. So if this is what the county thinks we need, to have something, you know, scaled this big to be able to access and turn around a public safe service, then so be it. I'll be willing. Jerry's willing. Again, I don't think Joe is, but... And then again, if we can get this cul-de-sac, I don't think that... I agree with Mr. Holder and Mr. McMichael. No one needs to go beyond where the gate's being put up. I totally agree with that. I was looking for answers as to why county taxpayers paid for millings to be dropped 150, 200 feet past a particular gate that's being put up, and it's being maintained today for 20 some odd years.
Madam Chair, a question.
I have one.
Did we maintain this road when it was dirt, Terry? All the years it was dirt? I mean, I remember what it...
We did. We did the scraping and everything.
Yes.
As far as the gate, you might... I'm sorry.
Was the gate put up after the millings was put down?
I would say, you know, that Mr. Cronin recently, as he said, sold his property. So remember, when the road went as far as it did, these properties were not cut up. Mr. Cronin's property would have came up further. So what is there today that you're looking at was probably not there when the millings was put down. After the properties were sold, Mr. Cronin did sell Mr. Lucas his property, as well as that other flag lot that's got Joe Cronin. Joe sold that as well and recently got that back. So all that's just been recently done. So when the millings were down there, remember, it would have went into his property further, and all these fences and gates have changed since that time. I don't know if that explains why it went past this gate. I can't attest to whether that gate was there when we put down the millings or not. I really don't know the answer to that.
Well, I kind of can.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Hi, I'm Mary Brannon, and I live up the road a little bit. My maiden name was McClung, and we have owned... Any of you that's been down the road, my husband and I live on the horse farm, Willowick-Morgan Farm. My dad bought our farm in, I would say, 1962. So I was actually the first person that was on that road. And a little bit of probably why the millings go down past that gate, back when Joe's kids were young and in elementary school, Joe actually fixed a place at the end of his road so that the school bus could come down and pick his kids up at his house. And the gate and that fence he's got down there wasn't there at the time. And I think what... The road was still dirt at that time, but he had a very nice turnaround fix for the school bus. And I think part of what he had the county go ahead and pave when they put the asphalt or blacktop down was part of the turnaround, because at that time, his kids had already finished high school, and they had gone on and left. And also, I know that when our son got to the point where he was old enough to ride the school bus, he still had his turnaround down there. And my husband went and asked him, until we could fix a place up and widen our driveway enough for the school bus to turn around, would he mind if the bus came down there and turned around in his turnaround? And Joe said no.
And that's when the gate went up?
And that's when the gate went up, and his turnaround was fixed, so that you couldn't turn around anymore. So we've been dealing with Joe for a long, long time. And I think that that blacktop milling stuff was put down like in the early 90s.
It was put in the 90s, Brian. Was it later? Well, no, it was adopted. The road Cronin Drive was... That section of three-quarter, .75 or whatever the county's got on record was actually adopted and accepted to the state.
No, no, I meant the blacktop stuff.
The adoption was in 86. Now, the millings, I think, what Mary's saying, were put down in the early 90s.
Mr. Bowman?
Terry, it looks like you're not centered up on the road as it stands, and it's... I'm sure Mr. Hutchinson would... It's going to take some off of his, but wouldn't you want to center that as opposed to the way you've got it drawn, where you've got the road coming in? I mean, you're dead in the middle of Cronin's property. You know, if you centered it up a little bit, it looks a little off-scale, actually.
It is definitely off-centered. I mean, if you were going to center the cul-de-sac around the road, you would certainly extend a lot more into Mr. Hutchinson's property. And what we were trying to do with this alignment, as Mr. Lucas stated, if you'll look at the extreme right-hand side of that drawing, those lines represent a fence that's been put back. So we were trying to put the cul-de-sac, if you will. This property is really an entrance into an easement that the power company has to go down right beside Mr. Cronin along the property line between Mr. Cronin and Mr. Hutchinson. So that is really effectively acting as a driveway. So our thoughts were there, since it's effectively acting as a driveway, if we just use that as a cul-de-sac, it's really not creating any more impact on Mr. Hutchinson. If you center it, it would move the cul-de-sac to the right and impede his property even more, which you'd have to go to the cost of relocating some fences. There's also a drainage ditch there that goes down through there and carries some water. All of that would have to be moved. If, in reality, if you look, Mr. Cronin's property as it is hits dead center kind of where the cul-de-sac is now, with Mr. Lucas actually giving about the same amount of land as Mr. Hutchinson. The more you move the cul-de-sac to the right, the more you're going to put it on Mr. Hutchinson and less on Lucas. So we were trying to just somewhat do a balance of impact to all the properties. In our opinion, the fire department could still get in there and go around it successfully, even with that, if you will, that offset cul-de-sac. So we were just trying to simply balance the impact of property owners.
Any other questions or comments? I guess we can't really take action on this in this meeting. We just need to have some further discussions about the direction that we need to take.
One, can I say? One final thing. Mr. Bowman, if the cul-de-sac, from an economic standpoint for the county, wouldn't really make any sense for, in my opinion, to move it more toward Jerry's property. The bank that comes along this curve here with this ditch is about eight to 10 feet high. And to actually catch the water that's coming, because if you are gradually going downhill toward this cul-de-sac that we're looking at, you'd have to put in an underground detention catch basin, so to speak. You wouldn't be able to divert it to go around to the right-hand side if you moved it over to the right, which of course would cost a lot more money to construct. Now, final note, this flag here goes to a 10-acre parcel. Goes to a 10-acre parcel that's here. It's zoned for one more house. This cul-de-sac would actually help the access to this 10-acre vacant property. And then again, keep in mind, Mr. Cronin lives at the end of the road here. This is just a vacant cow pasture. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, Big Five Enterprises is requesting to appear before the board regarding the Terrorfield Airport Project, and I believe that this is an update to the financial economic impact analysis that you were asked to do at the last meeting. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to, again, come before you on behalf of Big Five Enterprises and Atlanta Film Studios. At the last meeting of the Board of Commissioners we attended, the board requested that we engage the services of a consultant to perform financial feasibility and economic impact studies. To that end, the services of Bleakley Advisory Group were solicited. Mr. Gary Manchin is here this morning representing the Bleakley Advisory Group, or BAG as we call them, to present those studies to the board. Also present today is Jeremy Harrington and Nick Smarigan from Roadtown Enterprises, the management team for Atlanta Film Studios and formerly with Albuquerque Studios. At the conclusion of the Bleakley presentation, we are available to answer any questions the Board of Commissioners might have. So at this time, I'd like to present Gary Manchin.
Good morning. Glad to see the technology's working. That's always the most stressful part of these presentations, is to make sure the equipment's working. Our firm, Bleakley Advisory Group, has been in existence for about 10 years. The principals of our firm, of which I am one, have been doing this kind of work for combined maybe 60 years. I've done this for about 25 years, doing financial feasibility, market research, and public-private partnerships. And during the course of my career, I've looked at a lot of special purpose properties, which I would classify this as one. This is the first time we've analyzed the film studio... This is the first time we've analyzed the film studio. And about a month ago, we were asked to look, we understood that you had questions, that you needed an independent third-party analysis, and were asked, you know, what could you do to perform due diligence on the part of the county to answer the kinds of questions that you as elected officials were likely to have? And within that scope, we proposed to do three things. We could review their development proposal for reasonableness based on their construction and development costs relative to other similar types of facilities across the country. We could look at how much lease revenue they would have to generate and how much film production they would have to secure in order to make their pro forma numbers, and to look at whether that was reasonable with respect to the industry and the amount of spending by the film industry in the state of Georgia. And we could also look at the value of the completed real estate development. This is a special purpose project, but at the end of the day, they're building about three hundred and eleven thousand square feet of buildings that are very characteristic of industrial warehousing and aviation hangars and office space. So that real estate, if not used for film production, in the worst case, could be used for something else. So we were asked, so we wanted to look at, what would the underlying value of that be if there were no studio project to support it? And then finally, we looked at the project's capacity to carry debt service. We know that the county's been asked to make a pledge for a portion of that debt. And so we looked at the financial aspects based on the proposed uses and whether, and if, in the worst case, it had to be converted to buildings, again, that were more typical of this market. And in effort to understand what is the real financial risk to the county, as well as some of the financial rewards if you were to participate in this, and understand that there is no right or wrong answer to this. All we can do, and all we're doing this morning, is to try to give you our best professional judgment in order to quantify the range of costs and benefits of this project. And two people looking at the same numbers can obviously draw different conclusions. But again, I think hopefully we can give you some confidence in terms of the level of risk and reward that you're looking at with this project. In any analysis, we have to make some assumptions and limiting conditions, and these are, you know, standard. We assume that the development team is competent. We assume that the site is suitable. All of these things would be addressed in the process of due diligence proceeding toward an agreement. But the most significant assumption is we're assuming that Georgia will remain competitive with other states in terms of the incentives it offers to attract film productions. And the state is currently very competitive, and the main assumption is that it will choose to remain competitive in this industry for the long term. The first thing we have to do is understand, well, what's the film industry in Georgia? And there are a lot of industries in Georgia that people are familiar about. They're familiar about the carpet industry. They're familiar about the auto industry. They're familiar about logistics and warehousing and biotech and a lot of industries. But most people don't really know much about the film industry in Georgia. So we started there, looking both nationally and in the state, how big is this industry and how is it comprised, and what's the level of economic activity in Georgia? And we were surprised to learn, I mean, this is a sixty billion dollar industry nationally. So it's an export industry. That was back in two thousand and seven, it was a sixty billion dollar industry. Who knows what it is today nationally? We found five hundred Georgia companies in the motion picture and sound recording industry. They employ fifty-nine hundred workers and had a hundred and fifty million in payrolls back in two thousand and two. And again, we're almost a decade later, eight years later, that number has certainly grown. And it's an important industry cluster in Atlanta in particular. It's part of the statewide economic development strategy. If you look at their annual report, film production is presented along with another, several other important key target industries like biotech and automotive, et cetera, and tourism. So it is a significant industry in Georgia. It's recognized by the state, and it's one of their target industries to grow the state's economy. We found a hundred and six companies using Dun &amp; Bradstreet that are specifically motion picture TV and video production companies that have annual sales of at least a half a million dollars. And today, according to Dun &amp; Bradstreet, their numbers are always conservative. It's close to a hundred and eighty million in payroll and nearly fifteen hundred employees today. And there's also three hundred and fifty companies nationally that do annual sales between three and a hundred million dollars. And if this facility were to be successful, it would have to fall in that range and would have about, again, three hundred and fifty peers across the country. We found that the Motion Picture Association and their National Economic Impact Study ranked Georgia fifth among all states in terms of spending on film productions in the state. It's a, estimate one point one billion in total economic impacts, including secondary sources. The industry's particularly growing in the state of Georgia. According to the state's own annual report, it was close to six hundred and fifty million in the last fiscal year. The calendar year, it's about six hundred and fifty million. And based on what we could find looking forward, it's probably a seven hundred million dollar annual industry stabilized in the state over the next few years. And that's really the size of the market. And if there were more facilities in the state, it's possible that that spending potential would increase, which has been the experience in New Mexico and other states. So it's a seven hundred million dollar annual industry in Georgia. And remember that number, because it impacts some of our later calculations. We also looked at comparable independent studio facilities in the country outside of California, where the bulk of them are based, and New York, which is the second largest state in the union in terms of production and spending by this industry, just to see what exists today and what has been proposed in the future, and to find out, is this proposal similar to other things? Is it out of the ordinary? Does it look reasonable in light of what else is going on in the country, et cetera? So again, it's just to give it some context. And in terms of the existing studios, the one that is most well-known and is affiliated with this project is Albuquerque Studios, kind of a prototype of what's being proposed here. I won't go through all these numbers, but basically, it's been in existence for over twenty months. It's doing annualized sales of about a hundred and thirty-three million a year. They've done two hundred million-plus worth of production since it opened. It's reported to be the largest in North America, and it's reported to be under expansion in two thousand and eleven. So again, that kind of gives you a context of similar size in a state, New Mexico, which has also made a substantial push to attract film productions, but today is doing less in volume than the state of Georgia. The other one that's in the southeast and is known to a lot of people is EUE Screen Gems in Wilmington, North Carolina. This facility's been around for a long time, was developed in the mid-nineteen eighties. It was sold once. It was, it had some financial difficulties for a period of time, but has done well since acquired by its current owner in nineteen ninety-six. It recently expanded with a thirty-seven thousand square foot soundstage with underwater filming tank. That one studio is probably worth more than the rest of the site combined. And it's become, an interesting thing about this, it's become a significant tourist attraction in Wilmington. If you look at their tourism materials that go on the web, you will see it as a tourist attraction. So at some point in time, you know, this facility might have a similar kind of draw. There's another one we found, it's called the Celtic Media Center in Baton Rouge, Louisiana. It's a seventy million dollar project on twenty acres. We found that a lot of these facilities take two or three years in planning before they finally get built. A lot of these were started, the newer ones that we're looking at, were started around that timeframe, in the middle of the decade, the last decade. Again, it's a little smaller than what's being proposed here, but again, they're in the second phase, I believe. There's fifty thousand feet of construction ongoing there. There's two existing studios in Georgia. This one is Riverwood, is in Sonoya. Been around for a long time. It's relatively small and quiet in terms of how these facilities operate. But again, it's had a number of significant film productions over its history. It employs four people. I would, again, not being an expert specifically in the film industry, this facility does not appear to offer anything close to the technology and the amenities that are being proposed here. But it has, again, been in successful operation for well over a decade. And then there's Tyler Perry Studios in Atlanta, which is a little different than these others in that this is a privately held company. This studio is purchased for the purpose of working on Tyler Perry Productions only. He recently moved out of a property in Midtown to a two hundred thousand square foot facility on thirty acres on the south side. His company has done about a billion dollars in gross sales for a guy that's in his mid-thirties. It's quite an incredible story. Again, it's, again, one more industry in a cluster in Atlanta that's growing and becoming more significant. Then I looked at a number of projects around the country that are in similar stages to this one, in that they have been proposed, they're in various stages of planning, and scheduled to open, if they open, in two thousand and ten, thereabouts. And we found, I think, eight of them. And just compared them to this one in terms of their cost and what local governments are doing to attract them, et cetera, et cetera. And I'll just run really quickly through some of these. One is Santa Fe Studios, which is near Albuquerque, obviously. And I think this project was started in response to the success in Albuquerque and wanting to do the same thing in Santa Fe. It's a forty million dollar project. The first phase is about eighty-six thousand square feet. The interesting thing about this is the county assembled the land for this project, put in the infrastructure, wants to resell it to the developer of the studio for forty thousand an acre, which is significantly less than it costs to acquire and assemble and improve the site. The project is reportedly going to receive a ten million dollar grant from the state of New Mexico, and the county's financing with an industrial revenue bond, very similar to what has been requested here. Then there's a project called Plymouth Rock Studios in Plymouth, Massachusetts, which is an absolutely massive project planned for a former golf course that occupied two hundred and forty acres, a million, two hundred thousand square feet of production and office space and amenity space, basically proposing to build a community on the south side of metro Boston. Almost a half a billion dollar investment, which is substantially higher by an order of magnitude of five, at least, of most of the other projects we looked at. And they also requested a state-issued infrastructure bond and tax increment financing, which is the Georgia version of tax increment financing, is tax allocation districts, which some of you may be familiar with. It's basically taking property tax revenues from a project, using those revenues to leverage infrastructure investments rather than putting them in the general fund. And that's how tax increment financing works. Again, a couple more. There's a project outside of Philadelphia called Philly Studios. I believe it's from the same company that's operating Albuquerque Studios, or developed Albuquerque Studios. It calls for a seventy-five million dollar investment, almost three hundred and seventy thousand square feet of buildings, and a tourist museum, et cetera. And they, that project will be supported by a ten million dollars of Pennsylvania tax credits and new market tax credits. And the governor of the state attended the ribbon cutting, and it was interesting that Pennsylvania is really big on trying to build a film industry in that state. Another project in Norristown, Pennsylvania, which if you've ever been to Norristown, it's not the kind of location that you would consider. It's more remote from urban areas. But again, another project involving basically the rehabilitation of the former shopping center into a studio and some ancillary development. And they're looking for eight million dollars in tax increment financing from local governments, and they're also scheduled to receive a ten million dollar state grant. There are the two more studios being proposed in the state of Michigan, which has also been very aggressive in trying to build a film industry from scratch. There's one in Pontiac, Michigan, which is a six thousand square, six hundred thousand square foot, former General Motors assembly plant or a warehousing operation. And they're proposing to build a studio there and have asked for, and I think are going to receive, a hundred million dollars in Michigan tax credits over twelve years to build that facility. There's another project in Louisiana spurred by the success of the Celtic Center. This one in Shreveport was announced a couple of years ago, started construction late last year, starting at ten million dollars for fifty thousand square foot in the first phase with other phases planned. And the city purchased the land for the studio for two million and are basically ground leasing it to the studio for forty-nine years at twelve hundred dollars per year, which is basically the incentive and the, it's a gratuity to give the land to the project. And then finally, there's the Detroit Center Studios, and in terms of cost per square foot, this one is a real anomaly. Takes a former casino facility in downtown Detroit, and they're proposing to build an eighty-six million dollar studio in seventy-five thousand square feet, also getting Michigan tax credits. And they're also looking at possible property tax abatements from the city of Detroit. So when you look at the common characteristics of these things, well, it's obvious that the film industry is gravitating out of California, where it's very difficult and costly, and they're moving to locations in states that offer tax incentives. Georgia's one of those, that there's a lot of interstate competition for films. Pennsylvania and Michigan have been the most, and New Mexico have been the most aggressive to this point, but other states are getting into the game, like Massachusetts, like Connecticut, Illinois, and some other places. So it's getting more competitive. And where these studio projects have been proposed, they have tended to receive broad local and state governmental support, including, you know, personal support by governors, a lot of support at the local level. We were looking for controversy, we were looking for articles where these things were criticized, and frankly, we had a hard time finding anyone who criticized these projects at the local level. And when you compare them in terms of their costs and size, we found that development budgets of fifty million dollars or more were pretty common, and that this project was at the low end of the cost range of other facilities, both on total, in terms of total costs and cost per square foot. Again, this just summarizes the ones I mentioned earlier, and you see that the development cost per square foot ranged from a low of ninety, where you're basically taking an existing warehouse and using it, to as much as eleven hundred dollars a square foot in downtown Detroit. This project was a little less than forty million dollars for three hundred thousand square feet, a hundred and twenty-four dollars per square foot. And then the other characteristic is that virtually all of them have received or asked for or have been committed some level of public financing. They're virtually all public-private partnerships. They're, the public sector has participated in different ways, but it's not uncommon, in fact, it's the rule rather than the exception, that these kinds of projects are built in a partnership with a local or state government entity. So when you look at just the project in terms of market context and what else is happening in the country, this project compares favorably in terms of the attributes of the location, its proximity to a major urban area, the transportation access in and out, the volume of in-state film production is higher than virtually all of these other states. The development costs are competitive, and there's a film industry and a support infrastructure in Atlanta that clearly doesn't exist in Detroit or Pennsylvania. So there's a lot of positives to the project when you compare it to other states that are trying to do the same thing. Again, we talked about the public sector support, and virtually all of these projects have been accompanied by some level of economic impact analysis. And we found two independent analyses in New Mexico and Massachusetts and another one in Michigan that all came up with similar conclusions about economic impacts. And they result from large direct employment for production, talent, technical support while films are being produced. And there's also a substantial amount of purchasing from these film productions in other industries, hotels, restaurants, et cetera, et cetera. And there's secondary tourism impacts over a period of time as these sites become known. People visit the sites, they visit the locations where films are shot, et cetera, et cetera. So the impact analyses done both by consultants, private consultants and universities have all came up with fairly similar conclusions. And then finally, these are ventures which are not, should not be developed by amateurs. They're, virtually all of them have an experienced partner with experience in this industry. And that's clearly a critical element of credibility and success. Next thing we looked at is, we could not find a lot of secondary source information about the internal business operations of these studios, how they work, how they earn their income, et cetera. The data was not readily available. And then finally, the risk that we see is that although the industry is large and expanding, there- there is going to be more competition, and that's going to make it more difficult for individual projects, so if you're going to start one of these, you better be in a good location, you better be cost competitive, because over time, it's likely that profit margins are going to be, are going to be squeezed. So, and that's probably the most significant risk that we identified from the market research. Then we took this research and, and looked at specifically the project from, from an operations perspective, and you can be relieved, I'm not going to go through all of these numbers, but we looked at the applicant's pro forma, we looked at their operating assumptions and their rent levels, et cetera, and looked at the bottom line, which was a stabilized, they expected to do stabilized rents of about $4.6 million a year. And we looked at that, we looked at ratios for the industry, and to do $4.6 million a year in revenue for the studio itself, based on typical ratios, it looked like these productions typically spend somewhere between 5% to 10% of their total budgets on studios and studio rental, which meant that for these, for the AFS to meet their pro forma projections, they'd have to do somewhere between $46 and $93 million a year in terms of productions going on inside that facility. The probability is it's probably going to have to be a lot closer to $93 million than $46 million. And the important thing is that when you look at that number in the context of what's going on in Georgia today, again, 700 million in spending stabilized, that's about 6.6 to 13.3% capture rate of statewide spending activity today. And in a tentative market research, when we look at projects, particularly these special purchase projects, if you can keep your required capture rate to under 15%, that's an indication that your plans are relatively reasonable, that this is not a crazy, you know, totally crazy idea and crazy risk. When you compare these same ratios to other states like Michigan and Pennsylvania, those studios are going to have to create an industry from scratch. Both of those studio projects in Michigan would have to capture 100% of all the film spending in Michigan today in order to be successful. That's a significantly different market risk perspective than this project, which would have to capture less than 15%. So again, it's an indicator of risk relative to these, to these other projects, and something that is probably a positive in terms of their pro forma. The next thing we did is look at the debt service based on their proposal, what they're requesting from the county, the industrial revenue bonds, and tried to calculate, well, what would that annual debt service be? And again, I'm not going to go through all the calculations, this shows you how we did it, but we looked at the interest rates for these things, and the interest rates, again, depending on the county's participation, could probably range from anywhere from under 4% in the very best case to possibly over 5%, maybe even closer to 6% if the county doesn't pledge any millage to the project at all. So we picked the number of 4.75%, which was sort of a little above the midpoint of the range, ran the debt service based on their construction costs and other bond issuance costs, we believe it'd be about a $38.5 million total financing, and the annual debt service on that would be 2.8, between 2.8 and 2.9 million dollars. Again, when you look at the stabilized net operating income from the studio, from the hangers that would be converted to studio space, and the, and all of those sources combined, they're looking at potential rent stream of $5.3 million a year. So that results in a 1.9 debt coverage, which means you could, you could make that bond payment of 2.8 million and use what's left over to build reserves, again, to mitigate the county's risk. And what we assume is that, in which I believe this proposal has been made and committed to, that the first 1.5% of debt, 1.5 debt coverage, 100% of that money goes to the bond fund to pay the debt service and to go into reserves on day one. And we've also assumed that any coverage above 1.5 would be, that the county would get half of that. How that would work, we don't know, but, you know, if it's a contingency that you don't get to 1.9, you know, maybe you get halfway there, et cetera. So we're assuming, again, that 50% of that, of that cash flow above 1.5 debt coverage also goes to the county to fund the reserve. Under this scenario, the total debt service would be about 62 million, and the interest rate on that, on those bonds would be about 24 million over the life of the bonds. We also looked at the revenues that the project would generate over and above the rents, these are revenues to the county, over and above the rents that would, and the debt service payments that would be made by the studio. And the project would clearly generate real estate taxes, personal property taxes and sales taxes for the county and the school district. Now, the real estate, the taxes on the real estate, because it's an IRB-funded county-owned facility, the real estate taxes would be phased in over time, and that's this blue bar, and basically, we assumed a proportional allocation of value, starting from 100% from the county and ending up at 100% to the private sector, and that those, those buildings would be taxable and increase incrementally over time. There's also personal property value associated with these buildings. Counties and the public sometimes don't pay enough attention to personal property value. At certain times, certain types of uses create a lot of personal property value, that property is not being pledged, and we believe that at least 2.6 million in personal property value would be inside these buildings for equipment, specialized sets, furnishings, fixtures, et cetera, that would be fully taxable. And then finally, the sales tax purchases on productions, which have been committed to local stores, those would also be factored in. So this project, upon opening, we believe would generate about 400,000, 350 to 400,000 a year in new county tax revenues. This is not school district, this is just county, growing to about 600,000 a year by the eighth year, and a little over a million a year by the 15th year. And again, this is directly associated county revenues from the project, doesn't consider any impacts on hotel motel taxes or any other secondary or spinoff effects from the project. So when you look at, at that scenario, and based on the projected cash flows after debt service, we looked at how long it might take to pay off these bonds. And the red line is the principal balance over time as debt service payments are made. The blue line, this line here is the annual, annual payments the project would make to the county to cover the debt service on the bond. This is the cumulative buildup of reserves over time, and as you can see, the lines cross in year 12 and 13. So at that point in time, the county, if the reserves had been accrued, and would have the option of retiring the debt at that time, there should be, again, if pro forma projections are made, there should be enough accrued reserves after about 12 or 13 years to fully retire the debt if that's what the county chooses to do. The next thing we did was look at a worst-case scenario. If, if the studio was not successful, what would the county be left with in terms of real estate assets? What would the lease values of those facilities be for other types of more conventional uses? And what is the county's real financial exposure in the, in the event the worst case were to happen? And we did it, we looked at it from two ways. The first cut was a pure market perspective. The second cut we took at the request of the county manager, we also looked at some additional revenues associated with the property and came up with, with a range of potential, you know, negative impacts in the worst case. Again, I'm not going to go through all these numbers, but assuming the county were to commit to a .4 mil credit enhancement, that would, that's a commitment, a general obligation commitment of $2.7 million of the total debt service. We believe that based on market rents and the level of improvements that are proposed in these facilities, that they could be converted to general hangar, warehousing and office space, that the lease income associated with those facilities, just the 311,000 square feet that would be associated with the studio and the new hangers, would be about a revenue stream of $1.77 million. Again, that's just in a, assuming in return of more normal market conditions in the next couple of years, this is a scenario maybe three or four years from now. And that's a shortfall of about 915,000 a year, which is about 34% of the total pledged millage. So that's, I think, a more accurate analysis of what the risk to the, the general fund would be if this were to default. And then there's a second analysis that, you know, the applicant is willing to pledge revenues from other hangers that at leases at the airport, not part of the 300,000 square feet. There's about 136,000 of revenue associated with those leases, which could be factored in to the, as a revenue stream to repay the debt service. And there's another consideration that these new hangers in the, in the FBO building would probably command higher rents than, than market. So we, again, included that assumption, kind of just to give you another look at this. And if you make those two changes to the analysis on the previous slide, the revenues from the real estate go up to about $2.17 million a year, and these are at, you know, 80 to 90% occupancy rates. And so that lowers the county shortfall to a little over half a million dollars a year, which is about 19% of the total mills, millage pledge. So, again, after considering real estate value in the worst case, we think, you know, a reasonable range of risk is about 511,000 to 916,000 per year to the county's general fund, which is equivalent of .09 to .14 mils. That's kind of the worst-case range that you have to look at if you decide to proceed. So again, to sum up some conclusions, again, based on our analysis of the pro forma projections provided by the applicant, as well as the secondary research we did, which was independent, you know, we've, we've concluded the following, that, you know, most nationally, when you look at this industry nationally, most comparable projects have also asked for and received commitments of public support, that the incentives that are being requested of this project are less than those offered by other states and local governments to attract studio projects. It does not say it's not a significant request, but it is, again, relative to what other states are doing, it's at the low end of the range. It's off, it's at the low end of the cost range of comparable studios, which means that, you know, if the market tightens up in the future, this facility should have competitive cost advantages to other facilities in other states. We think the location, again, looking at other studio facilities, existing and proposed, is very competitive location. It's a, most importantly, Georgia is a competitive state in this industry and offers competitive tax incentives at the state level. And there's an established industry here. We're not, you know, no one's proposing to create an industry in, from scratch in Georgia. It is, it is existing, it's well-established, and so it's a different situation than a Michigan or a Pennsylvania. The site itself has good regional access, and there is a cluster of support industries and technical talent that can be acquired right away. Again, we're looking at the need to capture about 14% of in-state spending, which, again, in the context of typical ratios for market research, is in the ballpark, that your annual debt service requirement would be about 2.85 million, again, using our interest rate in terms that are about the middle of the range of what's likely to be offered. If the interest rate is a point below that, obviously, your risk is lowered, if it's higher, your, risk is increased. So the terms that can be obtained and the underwriting requirements are very important. We're looking at debt coverage of 1.9, which is a significant cushion, provides for contingencies, there are almost always contingencies. If this number were 1.25 or 1.2, you should be really concerned, but it's, the fact that it's 1.9, again, provides a significant contingency allowance for the inevitable things that come up. And again, to the extent that reserves could be accrued early, the financing risks to the county can really be mitigated and lessened over time, and I think the critical period is probably the first five years. If this thing does what it's supposed to do in the first five years, it meets pro forma projections, it pumps $5 million a year into the debt service reserve account in the county's possession, and after five years, your risks should be largely mitigated, and potentially, within 12 to 13 years, if all goes well, you could pay off the bonds. Again, if in the worst case, the studio were not to be successful, there would be a county real estate asset that is better than what exists today, we think, very conservatively, could generate 1.77 million in rents, in a better case, 2.17 million in rents, which is a significant percentage of the risk that you're asked to be, you're asked, being asked to assume here. And again, the tax impacts, again, 350,000 a year initially, up to a million a year within 15 years, again, just the direct taxes, not considering any secondary revenue sources from hotel motel taxes, et cetera, et cetera. Again, we've looked at the job creation potential of comparable studio projects, and based on the magnitude and the expectation, it would have to do about $90 million a year in business, that should support 1,900 to 2,500 direct and indirect jobs, again, using the midpoint of the numbers that have been done by other economic impact studies in other states. And again, there are risks in the, you know, four that we mentioned, and again, the most, I think the most significant ones are that the state of Georgia suddenly decides that it doesn't want to be in the film industry anymore, which is probably unlikely, and the other risk is that other studios would open in the state with larger public subsidies and/or cost advantages to this project. And as of today, there, there were none that we could find, but that's always a risk for any kind of real estate development. So those are the things that, that you really need to be concerned, concerned about long term. And again, just the, this is a disclaimer that we always put with our, our reports, but the important thing is that if, if you're going to need documentation for financing purposes, then, you know, there'll have to be a second level of analysis for underwriting purposes that's over and above what, what we've just done. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have time, I don't know how long I took, but hopefully, this gives you and the public some, some information and quantifies the, both the, the cost of risk and the potential benefits of this project. Again, we tried to be as objective as we could, we are not here to be advocates for the project. This is our independent professional opinion on those issues.
City board member have a question or comment pertaining to the presentation?
I'm assuming they're going to continue, Mr. Abbott's going to continue.
Did you have more that you wish to add to?
We're available to answer any questions that the board may have. I think there were some questions about personal guarantees and some other things that we're prepared to answer any questions on that, or management or anything else that matter.
Okay, I, I do, Billy, and I hope you understand the position that I'm taking because I support the project, but I also have to support the people who have supported me, and that's the citizens of Henry County. But then throughout this proposal, the words if, assume, would need, could be, should, potentially, tends, may, over time, those are words that create concern of mine. And when you're talking about personal guarantees and, and making the citizens or the taxpayers of Henry County whole in case of default, then that's something I want to hear, and I have not heard that to this point. So that's, that's the reason I was asking for comments from him, because if that's the case, the real issue that I have had from day one is the liability that will fall on the taxpayers of Henry County should, should this venture fail. I'd just like to hear.
I'll comment on the personal guarantees. Never in the history of my lending or borrowing possibilities have, has there never been a personal guarantee signed. So in discussion with my partners and I, it seems to be, I guess it was common sense on our part that, that we never expected to not sign personal guarantees. We've never borrowed money in any way, form or fashion and not provided personal guarantees for anything real estate nature or otherwise. So if we were So, if we were to miss in, in addressing personal guarantees, we just took it for granted that, that that was assumed, because we never in a million years would have conceived that we could do this without providing personal guarantees, as we've done on 100% of everything else that we've ever done.
And if those guarantees would, would be worth what the bond indebtedness would be?
Yes, sir.
I have, you know, it certainly changes the position that I would take, but I just do not want to put the taxpayers of Henry County at risk. And when it comes to this, and based on "assume," "would need," "could be," "potentially," there's a lot of potential in many businesses that have never made it, and I, I'm not doubting the film industry, because we all have enjoyed films that have been made here in Georgia. I question sometime, as I have right here before, if Georgia pulls the 30% credit away, the film industry may not find Georgia that attractive. And, again, I go back to the home owners tax relief grant that was taken away last year with no notice. It was just, it had been going on, and all of a sudden, it was gone. So these are things, and especially in tough economic times, that I don't know the, I don't know the answer to it, but I'm just saying it could happen. But those are concerns that I've had, and if those can be met and can be proven that the guarantees that will be in place will relieve the taxpayers of Henry County of the liability, then I certainly will maybe not question it as much as I have in the past, because I'm not against the project. I've said that from day one.
Yes, you have. You've been very consistent.
I, I just don't feel like putting the taxpayers at risk in case of failure.
Well, and to, and to be clear of our position, you know, we do appreciate the fiscal conservatism that this board has shown in the past and understand the magnitude of the requests that we're making, but it's because of the, the difficult economic times that we face and the limited options that we have to solve those times, that a project like this really looks like a godsend in our eyes. I mean, when we, when we subject this to third-party scrutiny, and despite wanting to give them more information than they wanted us to give them, a true third-party unbiased analysis shows that we were actually more conservative in our estimates than we needed to be. I don't have any desire to lose the millions of dollars that we've invested in that property over the past three to four years, plus the revenues that we currently enjoy today on probably this cash flowing, much less have to back up a personal guarantee on $38 million. That's not appealing to me whatsoever. But the fact is that the risk of this project is so miniscule, and when we couple that with the rewards to our economy, the fiscal windfall that we could enjoy where we live, the job creation potential, and the, and when you look at the numbers, the fact that we are extremely competitive in the nationwide market as far as cost is concerned and as far as our request for public financing for this type of project, I, I think we've done a good job in doing our due diligence and, and packaging this in such a way to make it the most appealing that it can be. And if, at the end of the day, you know, the, the board decides that, you know, it can't support the public financing that we request, you know, we will have to look at other options at that point, so. But we do appreciate the fiscal conservatism this board has shown, and, you know, we enjoy living in Henry County, a county that's not bankrupt as a result, so, you know, I have to tip my hat to the board for that.
For the sake of clarification, because I, I know a lot of citizens watch the commission meetings, they see the presentations, and for those of us who have, have seen the presentations, we've had the meetings, we've been in a while, there are some things that we probably have better understanding of than someone who is just seeing a, a meeting here and there. So I just want to kind of bring it down to a manageable way to explain it to the taxpayers. Basically, and I'm, I'm speaking about your personal guarantee, someone's going to say, "Well, if you have the ability to personally guarantee this, why don't you just do it yourself?"
Mm-hmm.
And this is the way that I would explain it. You can tell me if I'm, if I'm correct. First of all, we're in an economy where banks are not lending money. They have gone to the other end of the spectrum. They were throwing it at people a couple of years ago, and now you couldn't squeeze it out of them if you tried. So, it's my understanding that, that the issue is, by using Henry County's name only, these bonds can be placed on the market and sold very quickly versus trying to do it just as big-five enterprises. So if you want to use Henry County's good name and our reputation in order to market the bonds, it speeds up the process. In addition, it also gives you the ability to borrow money at a lower interest rate, which also makes this project more profitable by doing it that way. But at the end of the day, you and your business partners have the wherewithal to personally guarantee that debt so that the taxpayers of Henry County are not left holding the bag. Does that pretty much sum it up?
Yes, Madam Chair, that sums it up perfectly. It's important to note that this is, this is financing. This is not a grant, this is not a gift. This is traditional financing, and if it weren't for the, the economic windfall that this type of industry creates, you know, to our homes and the jobs that it creates and the current banking situation to which you refer, we probably would not be here making this request at, at this point. Industrial revenue bonds have sold well in the past, but in the current economy, they're not selling at all, unless they are backed by a credit enhancement, such as the one that we request. So, you're pretty much dead on the mark.
One other comment, Madam Chair. Just summing up what I said earlier. Basically, if, if using the county's interest rate, and that's basically what you're doing?
Yes, sir.
And it is secured, I have no problem in using the county's interest rate if, as long as it's, it's secured and we don't put at risk.
Yes, and it is secured, it's well-secured, as a matter of fact. It's, you know, it's secured by the real estate, it's secured by, you know, cash-generating existing properties.
Understand.
And it's also secured by personal guarantees.
During the presentation, though, you also saw the shortfall in the presentation.
Yes, sir.
It should be from a half million to a million dollars a year.
One, one thing that wasn't noted in the presentation, if I might add, and Gary can chime in, on the day that we close our financing, on the day that we close, if we were to go bankrupt personally, in other words, my partners and I were to completely go bankrupt and turn over all of our assets, lose the $13 million in cash and equity we have in this process, turn over all of our existing leases and revenues to the county, and absolutely walk away, okay? We would have, at, at this level, we would have eight years of debt coverage in the bank, being controlled by Henry County and the board, eight years, before a pledge of millage would come into play. That's about as secure as we can make it.
And that's just on this project, but you have other business entities of which?
Yes, ma'am. We're, we're currently covering a debt service on this project of over $80,000 a month with no revenues. So you're talking about over $1 million a year right now. So we, we could cover that $511,000 almost twice, and we're doing it right now. We've been doing it for three years. We'd like to stop, though.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Abbot?
I do have a comment, and I think it's a question I totally agree with Commissioner Holder's position. We've heard that you have, and your partners, have the ability, but we've seen no audited financial statements that would show us that you have it. Now, you know, before I would entertain it, I would have to see that, and it would have to be audited financial statements that would show me without any shadow of a doubt that you do personally, and your partners do personally have that information. All so far is that we've heard that you have it. We've yet to see that you have. So, that's, you know, I, I think that it's important that we, that we know that we know, you know, and, and there's, that, it would be important for everybody on the board to have that information, I would think.
We wouldn't have any problems with that. That was a stipulation of the founder.
Okay. Just to reiterate, we've heard it, but we hadn't seen it.
And, and no request has been forthcoming to us to provide that. We've provided 100% of all the financial information that's been requested of us, so.
That's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, I guess then, um...
If I could just make a brief comment about the process, it might be helpful.
We've been, we've been, we work with, routinely work with local governments, county governments on these types of projects, public-private partnerships. And whether it's tax allocation districts or industrial revenue bonds, the process typically goes that a decision is made to proceed to the next step. And in this case, the next step would be to negotiate a development agreement and to satisfy the underwriting criteria of these bonds. So at that point in time, it becomes very appropriate to ask for all of this information to negotiate a development agreement that protects the county, answers your concerns, et cetera. And so that's typically where all of these kinds of points get put together and dealt with in an, in agreement. And the lawyers get involved at that point. It can be very expensive, as everyone knows, to get those agreements straight. But in terms of how the process works, all of these concerns that you raise are very appropriate and very typically addressed in development agreements, which are required in many cases by the bond underwriters, particularly when there's no pledge of, of general fund millage, you know, then these agreements get particularly scrutinized by the lending industry. So, again, that's how the process works. You know, I would anticipate, as you move forward, there would be extensive negotiations and putting together this agreement, and then the agreement itself would have to be approved by the commission before the bonds could be validated and issued. So hopefully, that helps a little bit.
Thank you. Well, we will wait for that, the additional information requested, and I'm sure you probably have that at your disposal, and then we can move forward from there.
All right. Any other questions?
Any other questions, Tim?
I have a question. I'm sure, I see a lot of the people here from the, Matt Hampton, do you want to include that in the presentation, because I think they're willing to?
We'll probably just wait and get all those, that information together on a fact sheet that the board can have and can see. We'll just, did you want that?
No, we're fine. We're fine now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to change the agenda slightly. Representative Steve Davis is here. He was going to speak during public comment, but because he has somewhere else that he needs to be, and he is the only one here for public comment at this time, I'd ask him to come forward and address the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's May, and I'm just now coming to talk to you about the session. It'll tell you a little bit about how the session went. It was, it was long and grueling, some very tough challenges and decisions we had to make downtown. The consequences of such a, a long session, we're seeing the retirement or moving on of over 20% of the General Assembly, some 45 members of the House and Senate are either running for higher office or retiring. Right here in Henry County, my mentor and my colleague and my friend, Representative Lunsford, has retired or is not seeking reelection, is, he'll finish out his term for the rest of the year. And obviously, Senator Douglas has moved on. We have a vacant seat here on the commission, and one of your colleagues is running for that Senate district. But what you'll find is, is you'll see a lot of negative press on, on some of the, the cuts that we made downtown, and they were some very difficult cuts. Our, our budget is approximately $5 billion less than it was just three years ago, and we had to make some hefty decisions on that. However, I will say to this board, we had some incredible successes for our own community. There was a package that I commend the governor on. Our delegation worked very, very hard to keep it within the budget. It was in the governor's proposal in the beginning, worked through the House and the Senate, and also the conference report. Even Congressman Wes Moreland made a visit to the Capitol during the session, to talk on several issues, including this one dealing with I-75. But in the bond package, we were able to secure $80 million for I-75 widening between Eagles Landing and Highway 155 in McDonough, and I, I think that is an absolute huge success. Transportation has always been at the forefront of, of what I've done, and I've been on the Transportation Committee for six years, along with Senator Douglas as well, and that is a, a big, big success for our community and our county. And transportation was some of the highlights this year, I mean, some of the successes that we did have. Additionally, Senate Bill 200 that was passed last year in last session gave the ability of the General Assembly to set 20% of the motor fuel funding priority projects, which was set out by the Director of Planning at GDOT, Todd Long, and that has been approved. And in that priority list was the Jodoka Road Interchange, not the right-of-way money, but the construction money. The right-of-way money was already there, and that's going to be spent on the motor fuel money. It's not actually a budgeted item, per se, that we passed in the budget, but the approval of that list has been done for the construction for FY11 of the Jodoka Road Interchange. And you might know a little bit better than I do where they're at with the right-of-way, but those are two big projects that we desperately need to move congestion as well as economic development in Henry County, and I was proud to lead our group this year and get that done. Furthermore, on a regional level and in a state level, Governor Perdue brought out a new transportation bill this year that the, the General Assembly worked on pretty hard, and we sliced and diced it a little bit, but we were able to come out of victories, first time in four years that we've been trying to push this, this through. It was not a perfect bill. I wasn't totally comfortable with everything in it. I, I did vote for it at the end of the day. Some measures that were absolutely crucial to me and for our community was that we had an equal seat at the table. The, the regional round tables will have two members from each county, and if we have equal representation, same as DeKalb or Cobb or Gwinnett, and having that same seat at the table, I think we can really generate some improvements and maybe help us with some of our other quarters that we haven't gotten to. You know, the construction dollars for Jonesboro Road, the, the western side, that's been pushed back in the long-range funding, Highway 42, and some other projects that we, we've been looking at. The transportation bill includes 15% of the funding, is going to come back for local road projects to help you with the intersection improvements and the lights that we, we've been really falling short on in the past. I know that's been a, a big issue with Commissioner Holder, and I hope to improve that, sir. But it was, it was a long, and, you know, we went about five weeks longer than we normally go, and, and it was, it was a challenge, but we did have some successes. I passed an insurance bill that I, I believe is a fantastic bill. House Bill 321 is the Insurance Delivery Enhancement Act, and basically, it's going to help our small businesses and independent contractors for the first time. We're going to be able to, to get in with the small business pools and offer health insurance to their employees. It also includes in the budget this year was an additional $1.1 million for Henry Medical Center. Basically, that's it through their Medicaid reimbursement, it's an increase. We had $168 million for education to our Henry County Board of Education. We also got $13.7 million for school construction, and about $5.5 million for equalization grant funding that they will get. So I, I think it was a rather successful year for us as, as a community. Obviously, in the state, we're going to have reduced services and offerings as a whole, but we did have some, some really good successes, and I was proud to be there. Local legislation, again, is, is, is always a challenge. We, we passed everything that the board wanted. It might not have always met with open arms, but we, we were able to get it through. And with those challenges, I hope that you will, will know that my heart was in the right place on, on the things that I objected to, and, you know, I just hope that you will use them in moderation and, and think deeply before you approve some of those projects, if the voters so approve the, the referendum. With that, I just wanted to come and say hello. I don't, I don't have a full menu of... I don't, I don't have a full menu of everything that we did. I'm still trying to recover. We got out last Thursday night at midnight, and, you know, we passed some 125 bills on signee die. And as most people know, the last day of the session is the most dangerous because we do conference committee reports where bills get added to other bills, and we're still trying to sort out everything that, that happened last Thursday. So, again, I appreciate, I've enjoyed the last two years serving as the Chairman of the delegation. I hope that, that in the future that we can continue to strive to do what's right for the, the citizens of Henry County and know that everyone's commitment's there. So, and I'd, I'd be happy to answer questions, Madam Chair. I just want, it was, this was more of a briefing on what we were able to accomplish on, on the budget, but I'll be happy to take any additional questions.
Commissioner Holder, you had a question?
I, I do. And as you know, I have had concerns about state funding on state routes and county funding. You mentioned on Jodico Road. Will the county be required to buy the right-of-way, and then the state's going to do the construction? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, the, the right-of-way is already in the FY 9 funding. There was no construction dollars budgeted.
What's the county got in that? This is not in your district and it's not in my county, but you are the representative, and I want, I want to see if you know the answer to it. Good example, many projects that are along state routes in Henry County, we're either required to buy the right-of-way or participate or do the entire project with the state with no, no money involved. Highway 42 South in Butts County, there's four miles of Highway 42 that's being redone, relocated, and it's been in the Jackson paper that the county has no responsibility at all. The state's doing that in its entirety. Are you familiar with that?
I am not familiar with that project, but I already know where it's going, and I can, I can tell you some of the hurdles that we have that they don't.
Okay, tell them.
And we, we are part of the federal MPO. We are within the Atlanta Regional Commission, and we have higher standards to meet than Butts County. Butts County goes directly to their state transportation board member, and they work out through the motor fuel funding their priority projects, where we have a litmus of things that we have to go through with approval from the ARC, through Greta, and obviously final approval from GDOT. But there's different hurdles, being in non-attainment and such as that, but I don't know exactly the requirements that you're referring to for all of the right-of-way purchases.
Butts County had, Butts County had none. And you know what we've done here, Steve?
Yes, sir, I do.
You know how many projects in, that we've done along state routes in Henry County that, as for signalization, intersection improvements, that in the end means that our county roads, as far as dirt road paving, county road improvements, are not going to get done because our funding, 25% of the SPOLOX funding in my district goes to intersection improvements along state routes. Well, that means the dirt road paving can't be done. That means the intersections and improvements on county roads can't be done. So I, I just think that even though, as you say, we're in a different, with higher standards than Butts County or some of the other surrounding counties that are outside, something needs to be looked at to, because where is the need? Where is the traffic? Every bit of the traffic from Butts County that comes up Highway 42 ends up coming through Henry County that go into Atlanta.
Yes, sir.
So it, it doesn't make a lot of sense. Also, Highway 155, Spalding County, stopped at the, at the Spalding and Henry County line with the improvements, when most of the traffic is between the Henry County line and I-75.
I, I agree with your frustration, sir.
And I agree with that.
And basically, that's some of the things that we've been trying to work on, is the streamlining of the, of the process. But being under the federal MPO standards, we are held to a different standard than Spalding and Butts County. You know, neither Newton, Spalding...
Well, it's very obvious, because when you get to the county line, everything changes.
It, it does, and, you know, but at the same time, I could tell you this, that, that I think that we've done well, you know, with some of the, the other things that we have done and funded, you know, with the Eagles Landing Bridge, the Jonesboro Road widening on the eastern portion, the Highway 20 widening project out to the racetrack. You know, we've done several bridges and intersections. It's not that the state is, is non-existing in transportation, it just takes us longer to do it. And as a matter of fact, it takes us 22 months longer in the Atlanta regional area than the rest of the state to do any individual project. And that hasn't changed, and I don't think that's going to change. All we can do is, is help streamline the process as best as possible. And Senate Bill 200 was a step forward for us. Obviously, a year later, we're getting the Jodico Road Interchange out of that 20% pool. If the voters so approve the regional bill in 2012, we will get 15% increase in local road assistance. So that, that could go to doing some of the SPOLOX projects and reallocating the SPOLOX projects to dirt roads and such as that. So, you know, we are moving forward. We're, we're attempting to move forward, and, you know, the, the state and, and transportation is, is a, an alphabet soup of agencies and departments, and we do, we are professional planners. We plan and plan, and we design, and we, we replan, and that's a frustration of mine. And I'm, I'm trying very diligently to, to move that bar, along with my, my colleagues down there. And I think we have done some successful things, but we're not all there yet.
And, and again, I don't want to continue, Steve, but you just mentioned I-75 widening from Eagles Landing Parkway to Highway 155.
And that will be a designed build project in, in the FY...
But that doesn't get through Henry County, and it doesn't go to the non-attainment area, which would be the Spalding County line. So that means the congestion between 155 and, and I think the traffic, the incident reports will show that one of the highest, other than Eagles Landing, along the Eagles Landing area, is just south of Locust Grove, going, it falls truck wrecks on 75. So we're not addressing that. We're just going to 155. And I, and I'm glad to get that. Don't get me wrong. I'm just saying, if you're talking about attainment in non-attainment areas, you didn't get through the non-, the attainment area to get to a non-attainment area when you went there.
And, and I understand that. And, you know, we're, we're addressing things in steps and stages, and, and we're trying to incrementally move ourselves down. You know, we've got the, the widening between 675 and Eagles Landing, but we didn't get both north and south. We only got southbound. Now, this project that I just discussed and this $80 million will also include the northbound lane from Eagles Landing to 675, just as a point of clarification. But, you know, we take the advantage of what we can get at the time, and, you know, as, as we've seen in the past, to, to secure funding, it's, it's a challenge. You've got 236 vultures downtown trying to steal every penny every day. So to, to come out of it with a, a, a large step, I think it was, it was pretty big, because it was originally discussed only taking it to Jonesboro Road. So, you know, we, we were able to secure a, a large amount of funding, and, and I think it was a good thing.
And I'm proud to get it, as far as we can get it. Don't get me wrong. I'm just saying, based on the attainment, non-attainment, I can understand a portion of that, but I don't believe it all holds water, Steve, because you can take this county, and all of this county is in the attainment area, and see where the dollars have been spent. State funds, that's all I ask. You look at it.
Yes, sir.
You know, and it's not even in your district. The district that I'm speaking of is another representative district, but nevertheless, it's Henry County, and it comes as funding from the legislature. So look at it. That's all I ask you to do, because it's very obvious.
And I would support expanding the, the widening down through Exit 212 myself. So.
And I want, I want to, does any other board member have a question? I just wanted to make a comment because I want to commend my board members. We got into a controversial issue a couple of years ago about the Jodico Road Bridge when GDOT was trying to slash their budget because they had more projects than they had funds. Pressure was put on Henry County to drop the Jodico Road Bridge. In exchange, supposedly, we were going to get I-75 at that time, which was doubtful because it had not even gone through environmentals. This board stuck to our guns and said, no, Jodico Road Bridge has been in the tip since 1999. We are not giving up that project. It has local significance. We shouldn't have to give it up. In order to widen I-75, we believe we should get both projects. And if y'all remember, you were all here, we sat here and passed a resolution. I think you got a lot of criticism from your residents up in the 4th District because of it. There was all types of negative emails sent out from certain groups slamming the county for taking that stand, and I am proud to say that we stuck to our guns because we fully believed that we would get both projects, and this is an example of that. So my hat's off to the board for that. We make decisions a lot of times that we get criticized for, but when you look at all the dynamics, all the facts, and, and the way things operate in transportation, we made the right decision on that. So I just, I, I wanted to get that plug in for the board members. I want to also leave on a high note, because I also think it's always important that if we can leave on a positive note, we need to do that. And so in conclusion, I would like for you to fill us in on the roadkill bill, because I think we should leave on a high note.
The roadkill bill. Madam Chair, on your way home, if you are, have the unlucky circumstances to run over a squirrel, you may get out of the car and put the squirrel in your trunk and take it home and have some squirrel soup. And that will now be legal in the state of Georgia. I didn't know it was illegal before, but apparently we had the, the good sense under the gold dome to address that issue and cleared it out for the, the taxpayers of Georgia. But thank you so much, and I agree with the, the Jodico thing. I was one of the detractors on that at the time, and it took a couple extra years, but we got them both. So thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Good luck, and, and thank you again for the honor of serving.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Baslow.
I have a question about this roadkill.
Okay.
I almost got away.
I know. You've been guilty of that in the law in the past.
You mean to tell me that we've passed a bill now in the state of Georgia, if we hit a deer or something other, we can take it home? Is that what?
That is absolutely correct, and you do not have to have a hunting license to run over a deer and take it home.
I just, Madam Chair, I just want to be sure I understood correctly.
Want to clarify that.
Yes, ma'am.
We all feel better having knowledge of that.
Yeah, I think we're all clear now.
We're, we're legal now.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Steve. All right. I'm going to also move finance up on, on the agenda, because Mr. Bush has to be somewhere, and so we're going to go ahead and move to finance at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair and board. This is the monthly, monthly update on the budget. It was scheduled for yesterday, but since I was the only person who was on the agenda, we decided we'd move it to today. This will be a quick version. On revenues, we collected $7,480,721 this month. A year ago, we collected $5,863,000. So year-to-date, we've collected $104 million, almost $105 million. Last year, we had collected $102,473,000 at this point in the same year. So with that being said, after nine of the 12 months in this fiscal year, we're 75% through this fiscal year we're in right now, we should have basically generated 75% of the revenues. We have generated 82% of our revenues for this year. At this same point last year, we had generated 79%. We will need to average $7.2 million a month for the final three months of the year to reach our budget of $126,664,000. And again, this month, we've collected 7.4, almost 7.5 million. So that, to us, is a very reasonable goal, and we think that we will meet the revenue On the expenditures, this month, we spent $9,621,307. Last year, at the same time, we spent $8,484,000. The difference in those two numbers is timing on when a bill got paid. The, the accounts payable day fell on the first versus the 31st, or the, actually, it fell on the first versus, or the first versus the 28th. I think it was 29th last year. There was an extra day. With that being said, the same thing, we're, we're looking at 75% of the annual budget through this point in the year. We've spent 71%. This time last year, we had spent 74% of that budget. We will need to average $12,028,733 over the next three months to spend what our amount of budget was. At this point, we're averaging $10,110,000. So we are under budget on expenditures. We have, in the past couple of months, with all this going on with anticipation of next year's budget, we have gone in and we have, I won't say line item by line item, but just about every single thing that is potentially reviewable, we have reviewed those requests. We have seen every department in this county help participate, help try to control our expenditures. We actually had an accounts payable week, not last week, but the week before last, that was $500,000. They usually average about a million. So we have cut down on expenditures. We are doing everything we can to make this year end in a positive note. And at this point, we, we really feel that we will make, meet our revenue expectations, and we will even more than meet our expenditure expectation, so that we will finish this year. Right now, we have $7.3 million with the fund balance budgeted. We think that we will probably bring that in below the $7.3 million. And the final, final piece is the collections of our SPOLOX 3. We currently have collected $53,517, I mean, $515,154.93 out of an estimated budget that was $57,764,088. And as you see on the bottom of that page from March, we had, we were at a 92.23% collection, and that had come up from, that was 19.19% from the previous month. We doubled that this month, so that we're now at 92.64%. We collected $2,542,000 in the month of April, which was for February and March, a combination of the two. So that's a very positive step. The last three consecutive months have been higher than the budget, and that's how we've been able to continue to inch toward that 100% collection. And by the time we get to the end of this program, we're 24 months in, got 48 more to go. We feel that we'll be there. And that's all I have, unless y'all have any questions.
Does anybody have questions or comments about finance report? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Building and Development Services, a presentation of the completed floodplain mapping project. Our presenters, Eric Lombard, Stormwater Director, and Jim Loubring, Building and Development Services Division Director, and that's going to be handout number one. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. We're here this morning to just have a brief discussion, an update on the Henry County floodplain mapping project. Back in October of 2007, the Stormwater Director and I wrote a detailed request for proposal. The approach that we used was to, to try to get a firm to gather the best data at the lowest cost to map out the remainder of our floodplains. We held a very well-attended pre-bid conference in December of '07. The selection committee, myself, Eric Lombard, and Pat Delk recommended, and the board agreed to award the contract to URS. All felt that they submitted the most technical and complete proposal to map all major tributaries in Henry County, and URS was also the lowest bidder. On July 1st of '08, Mr. Lombard gave URS the orders to go ahead and proceed as the funds were available in his utility budget. And so URS at Stormwater and the Stormwater Department have been working for almost two years to complete the project, and this morning, Eric and two of the primary consultants from URS are here to, to give you an update on the project and to talk about everything that has got us to this point.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Yeah, we're very excited to announce that the floodplain mapping has been completed, the technical portions. We also, there was a large public outreach portion of that, included a kickoff meeting back August 12th, the public kickoff. back August 12th, the public kickoff meeting, the evening of August 12th. We had three public meetings in the different cities, Stockbridge, McDonough, and Locust Grove, that were partners with us on this. They were fairly well-attended. Julie's Communications Department did a great job issuing press releases for those. And then finally, we had a public comment period between March 15th and 26th of this year, where we, again, it was, there was a press release and advertising on the website, et cetera, to get response and questions from the public and help them understand the maps. At this point, we believe that, again, the technical mapping's done, that the public outreach has been done, and we'd like to start using the maps as soon as possible. On your executive summary, it mentions that we'd like to start using them on June 1st. But if there's no objections, I'd like to go ahead and start using them right away. We've been using them in the interim to kind of test case some things, and they've been working very, very well. And they've really sped up the process with things like single-family residential development and that sort of thing. We're also really excited, because there's a lot of information, or a lot of things we can do with the data that we weren't fully aware of when we first started. There's, we can manipulate the data to find local flood areas for different storm events. This map just shows the 100-year storm event. That's really all I have. If there's any other, any other questions, be glad to answer them right now.
Well, I have a comment to make. It's my understanding that the ULDC gives you the ability to begin using the map. You do not have to have a formal adoption by this board. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Did any board member have a question or comment? Okay, so this is informational purposes only?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. The next two items are going to be just a matter of housekeeping under public safety. And I'm going to speed this along. I'm not sure that we need to have a formal presentation, but we have a resolution before us requesting authorization to accept a donation for the police department from the Fairview Civic Club. The police department will use that to purchase a microscope for property and evidence technicians, crime scene processing technicians, two headphones for the records clerk, gloves for the motorcycle unit, and several gun cleaning kits for departmental handguns and shotguns. If there are no questions pertaining to this, you have a resolution. I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0. The next item is a resolution requesting authorization to accept a donation for the fire department from the Fairview Civic Club. And these funds will be used to purchase a set of hydraulic extrication tools that will be placed in service at Station Number 6. If there are no questions pertaining to this, you have a resolution. I'll entertain a motion.
No question.
Have a motion by Mr. Stamey, a second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0. Thank you for sitting through that. I was just trying to speed up the process a little bit. Next item is under Public Works, a resolution requesting authorization to purchase a used 2006 VacTron excavator system. Our presenter's Terry McMichael, Public Works Division Director, exhibit number four. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board members. I need to pass out a different resolution, and I'll explain while the vac truck. Yes, ma'am. We, as the Henry County Department of Transportation, was in need of a, what is called a vacuum extraction system. This is a machine that actually has a vacuum system on it, as well as a pressure, a water pressure device on it as well. What we will use this device for is locating utilities and cleaning out small or manholes, catch basins, and that type of thing. This is a trailer-mounted system. And on that system, if you were excavating for, say, a utility, it has a pressure, a pressure washer, has a nozzle with about 4,000 BSI, with a head on it that spins around, which, in essence, disturbs the ground and allows you to cut it. And then a vacuum hose that would excavate that material as you go down. The purpose of that, of course, is to do utility locates for a soft excavation. We have to do a lot of utility locations, and in an effort to try to reduce the damage that we have when we do those, this will expedite that process, as well as help us in cleaning out any manholes or that type of application. We went out and looked at used vehicles, I mean, I'm sorry, used equipment. And this is the system that we would like to recommend. The reason that you have a new resolution in front of you, we had, was given an original quote of, and we were able to negotiate with them and reduce that, hence that new resolution in front of you reflects the lower price. So that's the purpose of the resolution you were just handed. Be happy to take any questions on that.
I have just a couple of questions. How often will you use this equipment, on average?
What would be the life of it?
No, how often would you have a need to use it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Chairman, I would say we would probably use that thing probably three out of five days.
A week.
A week. And then each, the time that we would use it, when you would do the locate set at a particular location, you might have to locate water, gas, telephone, power. So you might be locating three to four utilities at one location. It has got to the point where we are actually mandating, even if we install a sign in the right-of-way, where we have to drive a post down, we actually could have to do a utility located at those locations. So from there, all the way to culvert replacements, to grading, all of those projects require utility locates. And overall, you know, it's in the best interest of the county, as well as citizens, for us not to do any damage and disrupt any service. It's very hard sometimes to locate these utilities in Georgia red clay when it hasn't rained in several months, and it's extremely hard. And even though you're down there with a shovel or post hole diggers, not to damage a small cable like a cable TV. I have some pretty good-sized guys, and it's, it's kind of interesting for them when you say "soft dig." It's still difficult not to damage with those type tools. This system will allow us, I think, to do a faster, quicker job and less damage to any utilities. The head on this device that moves, it spins as it jets water down. As it spins, it's constantly rotating, where you will not, if you will, drill a hole into the utility like you might if you just had a pressure washer. Pressure washer, if you hold it in one place long enough, even with concrete, you can cut a hole in it. But this device spins around and has a round head on it that jets a stream of water. And as well, it will expedite this. The hand digging is a very slow process. With this doing it with water, we think we can expedite it and dig a lot faster as well.
The other question I had, I noticed in the literature that this is something that could also be used for vacuuming out detention ponds, retention ponds. And I didn't know if maybe there could be a dual use between DOT and stormwater, and a portion of this be funded out of stormwater funds versus coming out of the, completely out of police purchase.
That's a great question. It could. Either that, or I could certainly rent it to them. We would entertain, either option would be fine with me.
Okay. All right. Mr. Bowman?
Just a couple of equipment's clarification. I don't see, it's a four-year-old piece of equipment. Is there any warranty on the equipment?
No, sir, there's not. There's 500 hours on this piece of equipment. Not an official warranty, but the vendor says if there was any major problems with initial, that they would hand it. But I do not have that in writing. I just have Vermeer's comments on that. And Vermeer has worked with us very well on other equipment. So I think if there was anything that was a MIF write-off, that they would make that good, but there is no warrant.
The other thing is, how much is this piece of equipment, if purchased new?
I have an email from them originally when we started looking at this. It's approximately $44,000.
Okay. That's all I have.
Any other questions? Mr. Stamey?
Carrie, we're not using this to replace anything that we presently have, do we?
The only thing it will be replacing will be hole diggers and shovels, that type of thing. We do have a larger jet truck that we use primarily for cleaning out culverts, but it will not replace that. But we have a much larger truck that's really set up to clean out larger culverts. It has a much higher, bigger pump, bigger hose that goes in it that we jet out existing culverts to clean it out. And it has a vac system on it, but it's almost a totally, and it's a self-contained truck. This is on a trailer. So we're not trying to, intent to replace that piece of equipment.
And we do have trained available to the personnel that will be using this piece of equipment, correct?
That's correct. And we've actually demoed this thing several times already. And it's not real difficult to run. But we have one fellow in our DOT that has run these larger trucks and systems before, and we think he'll be, we know he'll be the one that we assign him to. It's had experience on this equipment before.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Basler?
Carrie, that concerns me, is that there's no kind of warranty on this? I mean, they will give us 30, 60 days, 45 days, anything?
That's what I gathered from them. Yes, sir. Dean? I'm sorry.
That concerns me a little bit.
Is our, is our fleet service is able to do maintenance on this if something goes wrong, or does it have to be outsourced?
It depends on the nature of the work, if it's just hoses and things. Our fleet department did look at this machine and go over it, and they actually gave them a list of things to repair that Vermeer is going to repair before we take ownership of this piece of equipment. I would say, depends on the nature of the problem, but yes, they have worked on our vac truck, the big truck as well already. So they are capable of working on this piece of equipment.
And they have faced the problems that you've?
I don't know if they have or they haven't, but they definitely understand that it will be fixed before we, before we write the check for it. They will fix it.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have a resolution before you authorizing the purchase of the vacuum excavator system in the amount of $27,500. I'll entertain a motion.
Please approve, Madam Chair.
Have a motion approved by Mr. Holder, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0. The next item is a resolution awarding a bid for the rental of dump trucks. And this is also presented by Terry McMichael. That's exhibit number five.
Madam Chair, this is a resolution where we're requesting to award an annual contract for dump truck hauling services. In order for us to be efficient at times when we're placing asphalt, we need to rent dump trucks. We have about, any given day, about five trucks or so assigned to our resurfacing crews. Depending on where we're at in the county and how big a job it is, we could possibly be paving and have to wait in between, in between dump trucks arriving anywhere from five to 10 minutes or 15 minutes. In order to make most efficient and productive use of that crew, we need a constant stream of dump trucks arriving in front of our spreaders. We put it down so we can be efficient and get in and out of these roads in a timely manner and not hold up traffic, as well as take full advantage of that equipment and manpower that's out there. In order to accomplish that, these dump trucks would fill in. Now, we recommend renting those as we need them versus hiring those people and putting them on full-time, because we don't need that many dump trucks all the time. So we would just use these dump trucks as needed, you know, when we got the right kind of paving job.
Does any board member have a question or comment about this item?
The only question I have, Madam Chair, is I think it's based on five, having five trucks at a time, you know, they have to, not?
They have to provide up to five.
Up to five trucks.
That's correct.
All right. Well, if the need, do you have the need any time for over five, plus our fleet?
Generally speaking, with our five or six, that handles us probably 95% of the time.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Can you speak from McDonough?
That's correct. And they were our previous vendor. We have used them, I believe, for the last six months or so, and they have done a real good job for us.
Any other questions or comments? Not, you have a resolution before you awarding a bid for dump truck rentals for the Henry County DOT to Faultless Business Centers Incorporated. I'll entertain a motion.
Please approve, Madam Chair.
Have a motion by Mr. Holder, is there a second by Mr. Stamey? All in favor? Motion carries 4-0. The next item is a resolution requesting authorization to donate right-of-way along Holloway Road, and that's going to be exhibit number six.
Madam Chair and Board, this resolution is a resolution that would convey ownership of a section of Holloway Road right-of-way to Georgia DOT, so that Georgia DOT can proceed with the construction of a Greta Park and Ride facility that's located on the northeast quadrant of the Jodico I-75 interchange. At the current time, I think there was an old park-and-ride lot there, very small, maybe held, not exactly sure, probably around 20 vehicles, somewhere in that range, I would think. Georgia DOT is in process of building a much larger park-and-ride facility there. In order to do that, they would need a portion of the existing Holloway Road. Now, this, of course, would not affect any of our residents. The portion of the road they would take would not leave anybody without access to their road or any frontage issues like that. We would recommend that the county participate in that, in the area up here. And I think the total amount of area that we would transfer over to Georgia DOT would be .31 acres. Be happy to answer any questions on that.
Any questions or comments from board members? If not, Mr. Bowman, I believe this lies in your district.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to make the motion that we approve the donation of the property DOT for the parking ride facility.
We have a motion by Mr. Bowman, is there a second? Second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0. And then the final item under Public Works is a resolution requesting award of a bid for installation and/or repair of guardrail. That's going to be exhibit number seven.
Yes, ma'am. This item has been before the board in previous times. We awarded this contract originally to a company called Quantum Mac. This was for the repair of, I believe, about four locations or so, corrections of existing guardrail that had been damaged. This particular farmer's awarded, given a notice to proceed. We met with them, gave them the notice to proceed. After several weeks, it became apparent there was problems arising. They hence sent us a letter that said that they would not be able to perform. So what we are asking the board to do in this resolution is to rescind that action or that contract with Quantum Mac. In addition, we then went to the second low bidder, which was a company called Corporate Vision. We contacted them to see if they were interested in honoring their bid. Of course, their bids had expired by this time. Corporate Vision declined, so we went to the third lowest bid, which was Sheets Construction, which is a guardrail company that's located here in Henry County. And they agreed that they would do the, this work at their bid price, which was $22,765. Sheets Construction is quite capable of doing the work, and has been business for a long time. The other two companies, we did not recognize them as people that we have done work with before its guardrail. Here, Sheets Construction has been in this in a long time, and we feel confident that they'll be able to perform this work.
Any questions or comments pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution that rescinds the bid to Quantum Mac, Quantum Mac International, and then awards the bid to Sheets Construction Company in the amount of $22,765. And I'll entertain a motion.
Please approve.
Have a motion by Mr. Holder, a second by- Have a motion by Mr. Holder, a second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries four zero. Thank you.
I got one other comment, Chairman. In regards to the new law about the animals, I'm quite happy, any citizen liked, that would like to pick up these deer, I'd be happy for them to do so that, because my department picks them up if they don't want them, but any of them that wants them, I'd be happy for them to do.
So that was a good thing?
That's a good thing.
Thank you. Jeremy, before you come up, let's, let's take the resolution requesting acceptance of the Georgia Department of Transportation Enhancement Grant. That's going to be an easy one. And our presenter is Sherri Hopson Matthews. That's going to be exhibit number nine. This is a non-matching grant, so I think we can probably dispense with that pretty quickly.
Thank you so much, Chairman Mathis. As you indicated, in October of last year, the Transportation Planning Department submitted a grant application to GDOT for transportation enhancements along state routes. I know that there had been numerous discussions regarding some of our interchanges, more particularly interchange that leads to Speedway. The application was submitted, and we were notified about a month ago that we had been awarded a grant in the amount of $50,000. There is no match required. The only thing that we can use the money for would be for landscaping and enhancements purposes. So I'm just before you today to get permission to accept that grant.
Any questions or comments? Anyone like to make a motion to accept the $50,000 gateway grant?
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Stamey?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bazler, all in favor? Motion carries four zero. Thank you. And finally, the moment we've all been waiting on, an appeal of a planning staff denial of a sign application, AP 10-03, Mount Bethel United Methodist Church of McDonough, Georgia requests to appeal a sign application denial by Henry County Planning Staff for property located on the east side of the, of Highway 81, Mount Bethel Road intersection. The property is located in Land Lot 149 of the 8th District. On March 2nd, 2010, planning staff denied the proposed ground sign application. The applicant filed the appeal for the denied application with the Planning and Zoning Department on March 29, 2010. The property is located within Commission District Number One. Our presenter is Mr. Jeremy Gilbert, Planning and Zoning Department, exhibit number eight. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and board members. What's before you is a deny, an appeal to a denied sign application for property located that's highlighted on the map that's before you. The property is owned by Mount Bethel United Methodist Church, but it is not the property that the church itself is located on. There is a building located on this site, which has been determined to be a previous blacksmith shop. It is approximately 16 feet wide, which based on the ULDC ordinance requirements would allow up to a 16-square-foot sign. The requirement is one square foot per building frontage foot. With the building being 16 feet, it could be 16 square feet. The sign that is being proposed by the applicant is 32 square feet, so it does exceed that requirement, therefore leading to staff denying the request. The property is also, there's a road improvement project that's in the SPOLOSH 3 program, but it is on hold. That will realign Mount Bethel Road, which is the reason why the applicant is requesting to locate the sign on this property, not on the property in which the building is located. Would be for better visibility once the roadway improvements are done. In talking with the SPOLOSH Department, it's on the long-term plans of SPOLOSH 3, so there's not a timeframe as to when it would be completed. I will answer any questions that you have.
Jeremy, when the road realignment comes in, I'm assuming the other section that comes in at an angle, is that going to be abandoned?
At this point, I don't believe it has been determined, because that's the only point of access that the church has, is off of that portion of the road. But I'm sure the SPOLOSH Department would be able to give us any definite information really not that portion would be abandoned.
But the church owns the triangular piece?
This portion here?
They own that, and the triangular piece that sits up on the road?
Correct.
Okay. So when the realignment comes in, it'll actually create one continuous piece of property there?
Absolutely.
Okay. Mr. Holder?
Yes, ma'am. And I know Mark Donnelly is here to present on behalf of the church, and to cut through the chase, he sat patiently for two and a half hours, and it's understandable. But this is a case where obviously the ULDC says that based on the, the building being in that location, it would, would allow a two-foot sign or whatever. Once this intersection is improved, the church is asked to, to be exactly within the law. They actually asked that the DOT go out or someone and, and tell them exactly where it would, would be so that with the widening of 81 for the intersection improvement, that wherever they decided to put that sign, they wouldn't be impacting and have to relocate the sign, either by the county's expense by, from, when the road is punched through, or what? They've tried to do what's right, but even if, if this exists, if this project goes through and when it's available to be funded, this right-of-way will go back to, to Mount Bethel United Methodist Church, because I can assure you that even though that road is paved right now, that that road, the right-of-way for that road was donated by Mount Bethel United Methodist Church, and it should revert back to them. That puts all of these buildings then on one tract of property, which would certainly qualify for a 32-foot sign, wouldn't it, Mr. Gilbert?
That is correct. If it was one parcel of that building, it would qualify for that.
No question about it. And when we know, the road that you see to your left was, was part of SPOLOSH 2, and the realignment of Mount Bethel has been on the books for, since SPOLOSH 2. Mark, if you'd come far, you've got the data. I've been here since SPOLOSH 1, and I think it's been on SPOLOSH 2, 1 and 2 possibly, but it's never been funded. Some of you may remember, we had an issue here at a previous meeting about the closing of that section of Mount Bethel Road back into Sand Ridge. Anyhow, that's the existing sign that you see right there now. And this is the, what you're looking at right now, right in here, the church entrance here, and there's 81.
Mr. Bowman, Mr. Stamey, ask a question.
This is State Route 81. Is this north of McDonough?
That is northeast of McDonough. But it's still in the non, it's still in the attainment, there's no funding, but it's south of the attainment area that gets funded. Is that clear enough? Is that a better, a precise location?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. I just.
Should address this with Mr. Davis when he was here.
I thought I addressed it pretty well, Mr. Davis. Okay. From this photograph that Mark has presented to the board, if you will look over the top of the Mount Bethel United Methodist sign that you see, and you see he's drawn in an alignment with the dots from Wind Road straight across, excess dirt that we had on the Mount Bethel, I mean, on the Wind Road project, we put into this. This was quite a field. That, that dirt was put in so that in time, this, this alignment could be made. You see where it is, and I would certainly ask that the board consider overturning the denial and, and allow them to put the sign out. Well, I want to see if Mark has some.
You said you're patiently, would you like to say something?
I know, he's known a lot of my thunder. But I, I will really, just some few things I'll, I'll touch up on. I know it's getting close to lunch, but I won't keep you long. This has been a project that's been going on since the late 90s. What you see in the picture here is a temporary sign that's been up for approximately 10 years. This project was on this, acts on the SPOLOSH 2 program as the Wind Road, Mount Bethel realignment. Wind Road, in this picture, as you see to your left, was a dirt road at the time. It got paved, but the Mount Bethel realignment part of it has been put on hold. So pretty much, we've been in limbo for about approximately 10 years. We've had fundraisers. Unfortunately, some of the people who initiated this at the time are not with us. So I am the new elected chairman of the Board of Trustees, so I have taken it on to, to try to get it done. Like I say, this is a temporary sign. The existing, the permanent sign we would like to put up is approximately 20 feet behind that. And as Warren said, it will be off the proposed, proposed right-of-way for the realignment when it comes.
In all fairness to staff, they could not approve this. So I know it sounds like it should be common sense, but under our current code, they did not have the authority to approve that. So I just, I just wanted to make note of that. Mr. Holder, we'll look to you for a motion on this.
Madam Chair, I move to reverse the denial and approve the application for the sign that has been presented, the 32 to 4x8 sign. Is that correct, Mr. Gilbert? And the height was 14 feet?
Correct. And, and after talking with the applicant and even looking over with what the SPOLOSH plan showed, once that's filled, it would be at the actual height, because there's more field that would have to be done for the road project, so it would be at 12-foot at that point.
Yeah, because it's going to come back up.
And we have a motion by Mr. Holder and a second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries four zero. Thank you. Mr. County Manager, any comments for our public session?
No, ma'am.
Ms. County Attorney?
No, ma'am.
All right. We already had our public comment from Representative Steve Davis. Our upcoming meetings and events will be Thursday, May 6th at 6:30 p.m. We will have a joint meeting with the Board of Education and the Hospital Authority here at the Administration Building. Monday, May 17th at 9:00 a.m., and Tuesday, May 18th at 6:30 p.m., these are both regular board meetings. At this time, I need a motion to convene into executive session for the purposes of potential pending litigation, personnel issues, or land acquisition. Motion by Mr. Stamey, I need a second. Second by Mr. Bazler, all in favor? Motion carries four zero. Motion carries four zero. At this time, I need a motion for approval of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session. Motion by Mr. Stamey? Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Motion carries four zero. At this time, we need to amend the agenda out of public necessity and add the consideration for the appointment to the District 2 commission seat. We need to amend the agenda. Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor? Motion carries four zero. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Monroe Rowarch to the second commissioner's seat until the election for, to fill that seat for the remaining balance of the term.
All right. We have a motion on the floor for citizens who may be watching this and are unsure what this is about. Commissioner Rick Jeffries qualified to run for Senate seat in the 17th District on Friday. Under the Constitution of the state of Georgia, he is required to resign his seat if these are overlapping terms, which it would be. Commissioner Jeffries still has in excess of two years left on his term. A special election will be held to fill the unexpired term. Qualifying will begin in June with an election in November for that seat. Monroe Rowarch has been nominated by Commissioner Bowman to fill that, that position of the District 2 commissioner between now and December 31st, when the new commissioner takes his place, his new elected commissioner. So we have a motion for Monroe Rowarch. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Motion carries four zero. At this time, I believe, Mr. Holder, you need to amend the agenda for a couple of items.
Madam Chair, I'd like to amend the agenda out of public necessity to include two resolutions to allow, to authorize the acquisition of .071 acres of right-of-way, more or less, and .0169 acres of temporary easement in Land Lot 240 of the 3rd District of Henry County by negotiated contract condemnation pursuant to the provisions of OCGA.
Have a motion by Mr. Holder, is there a second? Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries four zero.
Okay. And the other one, Madam Chair, is a resolution to authorize the acquisition of .050 acres of permanent easement, more or less, and .0334 acres of temporary easement, more or less, and .054 acres of driveway easement, more or less, in Land Lot 178 of the 3rd District, Henry County by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA sections.
Have a motion by Mr. Holder, a second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries four zero. And Mr. Bazler, do you have an item to amend the agenda?
Madam Chair, a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 0.013 acres of permanent easement, more or less, and 0.041 acres of temporary easement, more or less, and 0.045 acres of driveway easement, more or less, in Land Lot 198 of the 12th District.
Have a motion by Mr. Bazler, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Motion carries four zero. If there's no further business to come before this board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Bazler, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor? Motion carries four zero. We stand adjourned.